For December the 9th, 2013, Councilman Webb, would you please be kind enough to lead us in a word of prayer?
You have to. Bow our heads for you. Most gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day of life. We just thank you for all the blessings that you pour out on us that we're so unworthy of. Father, we just ask you, guide and direct us today as we debate and talk about the things that we need to do to improve this city. We just pray, Father, that what we do and the actions and the words we say today will be pleasing to you. We just ask you a blessing on each and every person here today. And just pray, Father, that you'll give Mr. Shine wisdom to guide and direct us this year as the new chairman, and Mr. Everson is our new vice chairman. Just thank you for them, that they're willing to serve and serve in those capacities. And pray, Father, they'll do a good job for this city. We just thank you for all your many blessings, and we pray this in Jesus' name.
Councilman Carbon, would you be kind enough to lead us in the pledge?
Please draw me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you are ready, would you please call the roll?
Ms. McCullough?
Here.
Mr. Everson?
Here.
Mr. Oliver Jenkins?
President.
Mr. Corbin?
Present.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Shine?
Present.
Mr. Sam Jenkins?
Present.
Mr. Vice Chairman, tomorrow at this time, I expect a motion from you for the approval of the minutes of the administrative conference on Monday, November 35th. A regular meeting on Tuesday, November 26th, and an amendment to number one to the council That would be on tomorrow. Mr. Mayor, we'd like to recognize you at this point and see if you have any of your friends or acquaintances or anybody you would like to give special recognition to.
Thank you, Mr. Shine. As in all instances, we welcome all those who are here in person as well as those who may now be watching us. I'm told it's no longer U-Stream but via the city's website. We appreciate individuals taking time from busy schedules to come and be a part either literally or via electronic media, the democratic process. Also, Mr. Shine, we'll have some more detailed communications on tomorrow, but this is a rather historic week for the city of Shreveport and for this region for that matter, but certainly for the city of Shreveport on this coming Thursday for the first time, to my recollection, I believe in 40 years. It would have been December of 1973 when a public high school from the city of Shreveport last took the field to compete for a state championship in football. That would have been the Captain Shreve Gators, head coached at that time by Lee Hedges. And there were some other famous individuals who were on that team, not the least of which is my predecessor, Keith Hightower, who I understand was a backup cornerback on that squad, but also some who went on to some significant prominence at the collegiate and the professional levels, like the Pennywells amongst them, Carlos, who articulated at Grambling State University and went on from there to play for the New England Patriots. But not only do we have Byrd that will be competing this coming Thursday for the, I believe it's Division Four, I think is the classification for how the Louisiana High School of Athletic Association, they've gone from five divisions now to nine, five in the public ranks and now four that they've added for what they call the Select Division. But also within that Select Division will be, for the first time, the Calvary Baptist Cavaliers competing for a state championship. So we want to, on today, wish them, both squads, luck. We will have some more details to share about that on tomorrow. And also, in the theme of football, we want to express at this point a very warm welcome to the folks with the University of Arizona as well as the folks with Boston College, who, as I understand it, based upon the decision of the Independence Bowl Governing Board on yesterday, will be the official 2013 selectees for this year's Independence Bowl. So we look forward to a great day of athletic competition on December 31st, I believe, starting at 11:30. And we certainly hope that folks will come from the desert southwest and from the snows of the northeast and find themselves bringing in the new year here in Shreveport. With that, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, we'll turn it back over to you.
I plan to talk with Councilman Oliver Jenkins to see if he and I can ride down with Jeff, who is a Byrd graduate.
You've got two Byrd graduates now, Mr. Chair.
Who?
Yours truly.
Oh, I don't know. I'm thinking you graduated at Booker T.
No, not quite Booker T.
Oh, okay.
Byrd was a good, good.
Oh, okay.
Good place.
I'm not sure we're all going to fit in a convertible Mercedes on the trip down there together.
He's going to rent a fancy one. Even fancier than that.
Exactly. How are we going to get there?
We're supposed to be riding down with Jeff.
I misunderstood. I thought you were offering to take us.
That becomes a hot seat at the very first meeting.
You all are some mess. Okay, let's move on to the council. Any council members that would like to recognize a special guest or have any observations you'd like to make? Councilman Sam Jenkins.
Mr. Chairman, I'll wait until tomorrow to send out congratulatory remarks to SWAC champions, Southwest Athletic Conference champions, Southern University javelins, but we'll wait and do that tomorrow.
Dale and I knew you were going to try to come up with something like that.
Well, I have to join him, Mr. Shine. My family's a southern family also.
Oh, my God.
We'll just wait and do it tomorrow, Mr. Chairman.
We might have a little microphone problem tomorrow then. And I'll tell it. All right, anybody else?
Just briefly, if I could, I want to, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not that good with keeping up with TV schedules, but I believe tonight is the next episode of The Voice where Shreveport local Cole Walsbury is just doing great on that show. And he's an incredibly talented guy. He's also got some really good manners, and when I see him on there talking, I'm proud that he's a Shreveport guy. So everybody make sure and support him and, you know, do your best to tune in and vote and make sure he stays around.
Is that it? Okay, communication from the mayor relative to city business.
Mr. Chairman, we will stand by the previous communication.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Dorothy Farnell, is she in the house?
I think she stepped out front, Mr. Shine, and though she's here.
While we're waiting on Ms. Dorothy, is she entering the house? Okay, Dale?
Yes, sir.
We'll go to you.
Yes, on revenue collection, we'll actually present the formal report tomorrow, but I will just note that the latest sales tax collection report is in excess of 3.5% increase.
Okay.
So the tax collections appear, people appear to be out there spending some money. So we'll present a more formal report tomorrow with the actual numbers and breakdown for you.
Dale, we appreciate you going out buying that new house then. All right, Ms. Farnell, please. Ms. Farnell, so glad to have you.
Thank you.
Any council members have any questions or concerns toward property standards? Chairman, we're going to let Ms. Farnell get off this easy?
I bet we'll see her before the meeting's over.
She'll be back. I'll have a few appeals today. I'll have a few questions about those.
All right, don't leave now. Mrs. Scott here.
She is present. She stepped out, Mr. Shine, but I believe she did forward the Surety bond report electronically.
Mrs. Sanders, Ms. Sanders, master plan committee report. Do we have one? Thank you.
Mr. Chair, that will actually be at your next meeting, the meeting just before Christmas. I believe it's December 20th.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let me make that notation down here. Okay, we have no public hearing. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I believe tomorrow we need to add a public hearing to the agenda to discuss the DDA budgets for this year and next year. We did advertise for that, but we inadvertently left it off of the agenda.
Okay, would you make a notation and please put that on the agenda for tomorrow?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now do we have any legislation that needs to be added?
I know of no legislation to be added. I don't believe I have anything.
No, sir, we don't have any.
You don't have anything? Okay, I have, matter of fact, Michael Corbin passed this on to me. Mr. Clifford Starks would like to come forward and talk about budget ordinance for 2014. What's the place of the council? Okay, can I get a second on that?
Second.
All right. Mr. Stark, Mr. Starks, please state your name, your address. You don't have to give us your telephone number.
Thank you, Councilman Shine, Chairman Shine. Good afternoon. My name is Clifton Starks, president of Central Trades and Labor Council of Shreveport and Vicinity, BFLCIO, 3924 Greenwood Road, 71109. And thank you, Chairman Shine, and to the other council members and the mayor. Appreciate you all giving me the opportunity to speak a little bit on the budget, but hopefully I'm not on a time zone. Hopefully I can do this within a few minutes, Councilman Shine. I know that we all face it budget, you know, the same way it is within our personal lives. And sometime I realize that we have to make sacrifices in order to do the things that we need to do. But the reason I want to come before you is because I think it was like early this year, I think that we supported a tax renewal that was for the police department, the fire department, and city workers. And this tax renewal, it was where that it would maintain things the way it was. And I'm hoping that during your budget for 2014, that nothing changed because we really rallied hard in order to get that passed because we support any programs that is valuable to the city, to Cattle Parish, also to our other union brothers and sisters. So hopefully that we don't want to interfere with any of our employees' salaries because in doing our budget, because, you know, once you get, it's just like a family, when you have a budget and the family is on that budget, and any time that with the economy the way it is and any time there's a drop in their income, it really a crisis within the household. And we have enough crisis going on within the communities. So I'd like for you all to really, like, make sure the department heads understand that, you know, don't bother the employees as far as their salary in doing the budget. Probably we have to find other ways, but hopefully you all wouldn't want to do anything like that because our police department, fire department, paramedics, water department, sanitation. I feel that these are first responders within our community, and they are very important. They keep all our citizens, you know, happy. I cannot imagine losing any of that service because it's so important to all of us, and we know how important it is in order to take care of our first responders because it's just sad not to think of it, of how it would be if those families who depend on, you know, their paychecks, and if their paychecks is decreased in such a way, that way would cause a friction, and we don't need that. So I would appreciate, once again, if you all would make sure your department heads will not interfere with the employees' funds, you know, their paychecks, and it would be certainly appreciated. And I want to thank you all so much, and I'd like to wish each and every one of you all a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have no comments on this. Comments, we'll move on. Mr. Clerk, we're going to put it over in your hands if it's getting the point.
We have no confirmations and appointments, and I believe the CEO is.
We have. Do we have some?
No, sir, not at this time.
Yeah, we don't have, all right. I didn't mean to look over you, Dale, I just noticed that we didn't have any.
Mr. Thompson was very gracious.
Yeah, he's very gracious.
Yes, sir. Under item A, consent agenda legislation, there are no items under A or B under section nine, regular agenda legislation, sub A resolutions on second reading and final passage or which will require only one reading. Number 202 approves the 2014 Downtown Development Authority Program of Work, otherwise provides with respect thereto. There's an attachment, one amendment, and as Mr. Thompson indicated, I believe there's a public hearing that needs to be held on this matter before a vote. Number 206.
And that's tomorrow, correct, Mr. Thompson?
Correct.
Okay.
Number 206 authorizes the mayor to execute a contract agreement between the city of Shreveport and Denny Drive Water System Nine, doing business as Eagle Water Incorporated for emergency connection of water supply service. This matter was previously postponed. We're going to ask for an additional postponement. Our water department has been having, still waiting to get some information from the applicants as well as making some contact with DHH to see if we can't resolve this issue and move it forward. Number 211 authorizes the finance director to create certain journal entries relative to the closing of the Information Technology Internal Service Fund. Number 212, a resolution to repeal resolution number 133 of 2012, which authorized the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Red River Waterway District relative to the construction and maintenance of a dog park on land owned by the city of Shreveport adjacent to the Red River in Shreveport, encouraging the expiration of cost-efficient options for construction and maintenance of a dog park at other locations within the city of Shreveport, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Number 213 expresses no opposition to the waiver of section 26-57 of the Code of Ordinances, reaffirming the findings and the directives of resolution number 120 of 2013 regarding the collection of overcharges from the 2011 general obligation bond election, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Number 216 authorizes a settlement of all claims against the city of Shreveport and its employee in the matter entitled Richard Mutter Sr. and another mutter, and David Carlisle in the city of Shreveport in Salito. I believe this matter is subject to an executive session this afternoon, and that concludes section eight, Mr. Shine.
Okay. Any questions, observations to be made?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Concerning resolution, what is it, 213? Could I get point of information, I guess? Somebody explain.
Mr. Sibley?
Resolution.
Be kind enough to.
I should try, Mr. Shine. Resolution 213 expresses an opposition to the waiver of section 2657. This is a matter that was the subject of some discussion between the mayor and council members regarding the use of Mr. Corbin Grisby as the FA on our matters going forward as well as a way of trying to resolve the outstanding or the controversial debt issue in terms of the $53,000. This resolution would allow for a proposal that the mayor submitted, which would be that the FA would deposit the monies into an escrow account, subject to bonding arbitration as a way of dealing with the debt issue. And then the council would have no objection to, under the ordinance, the finance director may go ahead and engage him for professional services. What this resolution would do is authorize the creation of that escrow account, the deposit of the funds, the bonding arbitration, and then allowing the city to go forward and use Mr. Grisby's services on additional matters. I think that's what it does.
Well, I guess one of the kind of things that's different here is there's the attachment, which, is that a new contract?
That would be the modified contract that we kept saying.
So that's the revised contract?
Yes, sir.
Because I don't believe when it was on there for, I don't believe.
Initially, it was not attached, correct.
Last week, is what I'm saying.
Correct.
Okay. But I didn't, I'm not, this is the first time I seen, so that's the intent, is if we approve that, we have also approving this new contract, the amended contract.
Right. And Mr. Jenkins, if you recall, that's one of the issues that we said, going back to the audit, that we had made those adjustments, had submitted it, Mr. Grisby had signed off on it, and when the discussion came back, we just wanted to provide that so that the council would know that that had been done and that you can read it and see that it addressed all the issues that were raised during that period.
Does it address who would pay for the arbitration? I'm just not familiar with how that process would usually work. I mean, how?
Let me ask Ms. Scott if, has she made it down? I don't see her over there. As soon as she comes back, Jeff will get her to come up. She knows the details of it. She's working with Mr. Frazier, who's working on behalf of the city on the collection effort, and she can explain a bit more detail about it.
There she comes.
On the bonding arbitration on the Grisby matter, Mr. Everson was just asking in terms of payment for the arbitration.
Yeah, I was just saying, what is the cost of arbitration and how does that get associated?
We've not yet determined what the fee would be. We would have to, of course, go through someone who is certified with the American Arbitration Association, and they have a standard set of fees for those kinds of matters. Generally, each party would start off by paying, there would be an agreement that each party would pay its own fees for arbitration, but then at the end of it, depending on the outcome of it, the possibility is that the party who does not prevail would be taxed with costs for the other party's expenses. Now, we could, it is possible, we can check with the American Arbitration Association and just get a ballpark of what the fees may be and provide that information to you later late tonight or sometime before tomorrow's council meeting.
I'd be interested in that.
Sure.
Just have an idea in my mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott?
Thanks, Ms. Scott.
Okay, and.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think in some of the general discussions that we've had with council members regarding that aspect of resolution 213, I think it was kind of in line with the latter portion of what Ms. Scott just represented, and that is that if the city prevails, then Mr. Grisby would be responsible, and if Mr. Grisby were to prevail, then the city would be responsible. But we're open. We think that would be fair, but whatever would end up ultimately being considered to be best practice and appropriate is something I think we would be amenable to.
Sibley?
Also, if you don't mind, council members, Mr. Chairman, going back to resolution 112 regarding the resolution of the dog park situation, I know that there, I'm sorry, 212. Thank you, Dale. I know that there's also a follow-up meeting that's scheduled for tomorrow prior to council. So we want to be in a position to make sure that we're able to answer or provide any information prior to that meeting or anything else that council members may need prior to the actual meeting, both in terms of the dog park as well as the regular meeting on tomorrow.
Absolutely. And we'll certainly include this in the.
12 PM, I think, is that not correct?
Two o'clock tomorrow, and the chamber's back here. And we'll certainly include this in that discussion. I'd like to ask probably what we, what I think would be the best in terms of timing is that since we won't have a recommendation from that group until that meeting tomorrow, that we, and then that would still have to be drafted and added to an agenda, that we may consider postponing this until the December 20th meeting so that we can follow up on whatever the actions of the outcome of that committee may be. And so that would put us all in the same timeframe. But unless anybody has a different idea, that's sort of what I was expecting to do.
Certainly.
Okay.
Thank you much.
Dale?
Section B, introduction of resolutions. There's one, resolution 215. It recognizes the Shreveport Council of Neighborhoods as an official organization of representatives of the Shreveport community and a resource to the city of Shreveport administration and city council, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. This matter is not to be adopted prior to December 20th, 2013.
Okay, any comments, observations on that particular piece of legislation? If not, Mr. Sibley, would you please proceed?
Section C is introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to January 14th, 2013. Number 161 amends the 2013 capital improvements budget and otherwise provides with respect thereto. This is the newest compatibility plan study update with the airport. Number 162 amends section 66-151 of the Code of Ordinances relative to sickly donations and otherwise provides with respect thereto.
Any observations? If not, Mr. Sibley would you please proceed?
Section D is ordinances on second reading and final passage. Number 149 enacts chapter 39 of the Code of Ordinances titled Human Relations relative to discrimination, definitions, and unlawful practices in connection with such discrimination to provide for certain exclusions and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. Number 150 amends and reenacts section 10-172 of the Code of Ordinances relative to alcoholic beverages. Number 151 amends and reenacts article 10 of chapter 42 of the Code of Ordinances relative to charitable solicitation. Number 152 amends the 2013 general fund budget appropriating the funds authorized therein. This is related to IT. Number 153 declares a public servitude on certain adjudicated properties and otherwise provides with respect thereto. Number 157, an ordinance adopting the 2013 Downtown Development Authority budget. Number 158, an ordinance adopting the 2014 Downtown Development Authority budget. Number 159, an ordinance amending the 2013 Grants Special Revenue Fund budget. Number 160, an ordinance amending the 2013 General Fund budget. Number 155 is zoning matter C8313. It amends chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the city of Shreveport zoning ordinance by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of West 70th and Bernstein Avenue, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from B3 Community Business District to B3E Community Business Extended Use District, limited to a compressed natural gas fueling station only. And number 156 is zoning appeal C7713. It amends chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, the city of Shreveport zoning ordinance by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of Emery Street and Hearn Avenue, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from R2 Suburban Multi-Family Residence District to B2 Neighborhood Business District. This matter was previously postponed until the meeting on December 20th, 2013. That concludes all dependent legislation, Mr. Shine.
Mr. Sibley, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Thompson? Any table legislation?
Yes, sir, Mr. Shawn. The budget ordinances will need to be removed from the table tomorrow and hopefully adopted at that time. There are a number of budget amendments to those ordinances. They are all listed on the E agenda, and I believe you've also received a spreadsheet with those on it and the companion ordinances. We've also provided you with a document where we show what we believe to be duplications and contradictions for your consideration, all of this, so that we hope there won't be any unintended consequences. Mr. Jenkins, to state how anybody ought to vote.
All right, that's why I was- Mr. Thompson, I'm glad you gave me a lead-in. I'd like Councilman Oliver Jenkins, if I could get a motion from you tomorrow to remove those from the table and-
I would be happy to support that piece of legislation tomorrow to move it forward.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Thompson, you have any other instructions from Councilman Jenkins?
I never have instructions, Mr. Shawn. I might have occasionally suggested, but never an instruction.
Wow, he's so, Dale, he's so kind, isn't he? I mean, you know, I don't know. I guess they went out and had a cup of coffee or something, you know. Rose?
I kind of understood everything that aren't explained. It's just that the spreadsheet that we have, it's quite new, and I don't know if it's because of, I mean, I'm looking here at the amendments and the description of the amendments and the authors. Of course, I'm the author of one of these amendments, and I guess the question that I want to ask, I'm not too familiar with this, the notes process here. Now, Art, I heard you say these are companions, and so my concern was, when I got here earlier today, when I reviewed the amendment that I brought to the table, I saw that some changes were suggested, let's see, where is that, to my amendment. So, and I wasn't familiar with that, and so I'm just wondering, all of these amendment companions, it seems like it's pretty much coming from the same council person, so I was wondering if it was because Mike Corbin might have been serving as president, he's authorized to do this, or any other council members authorized to make these amendments or these companions to amendments that have been suggested by my colleagues.
Mrs. McCullough, let me first try to explain what this spreadsheet is intended to convey, what information is intended to convey. If you look at the first one, it has amendment number, and on the first line, you'll see amendments number 1, 2, and 7.
2 and 7.
That means that if amendment number 1 in the Riverfront budget is adopted, then you should also adopt number 2 and number 7 because that completes the action. If amendment number 1 is not adopted, then amendments number 2 in the hotel and number 7 in the general fund should not be adopted because they will not be needed.
Okay. Which means it's going to be very important that I study this spreadsheet tonight, huh?
We will.
Tomorrow, Oliver.
Well, I think it's always important to be well-prepared for a council meeting.
Because it seems like if you, for instance, if I did an amendment, it's like my amendment would pass only if amendment number 6 or another amendment would, so that's kind of confusing, you know, I mean-
No. On some of the amendments, the money will be taken from a particular fund if that amendment is adopted. If it is not adopted, then the money will be taken from a different fund. So, we were trying to think about all of the eventualities that would occur if something is adopted or is not adopted.
And I guess what my ultimate question would be with regards to, because I'm always looking out for the best interest of Councilwoman McCullough over there, so I'm doing this on her behalf, just so that we're clear.
Right.
It's not a personal issue.
No.
In the event that Councilman Corbin's 9A does not pass-
Okay.
Nor 9B, what happens to Councilwoman McCullough's piece of legislation?
I think it is intended, and we'll go back and look at it, that hers would be taken from the general fund, I mean, from the operating reserve of the Riverfront Fund, that $50,000.
So, that's probably a little bit of, in regard to the note, it would be if this, use this minute of Councilman Oregon's 9A.
9?
9A, does not, 9A passes, but 9B doesn't or something? I mean, you see where my, because the provision is if it never gets over into-
Why is there a 9A and a 9B?
One's supposed to be 1, 9A, and the other one's supposed to be 9B. I'm just-
Right. Mr. Corbin-
You got the concept.
Yes.
I'm just, I'm sure we just need to rework that note.
Mr. Corbin has an amendment where he takes $545,000 from the money that's allocated for the NIP program and the-
Civic appropriations.
Civic appropriations program. And he puts that in the operating reserve of the Riverfront Fund, and so if that is adopted, then some of the other amendments that he's also proposing will be taken from that particular, from the operating reserves. We'll go back and look to make sure that-
But hopefully her provision becomes an issue of discussion if they go back through the whole reallocation of the civic appropriations application process.
Let me ask a question. Under his amendment, he puts $400,000 for NIP and civic appropriations, except for the money that's funded, for the items that's funded in some other way.
In the general, okay.
So, then, which was, hold on just a minute. Okay, this was my concern. Initially, amendment number 15, I wanted to amend for a certain amount of money, but there's an explanation of the amendment right below that, based on, I guess, the companions or whatever. The money that I'm amending for is going to be exclusively for a particular use, but if this amount of, it is saying here that this amendment is not to be used if another councilman's amendment passes to move the funds that the $50,000 is recommended to come from. So, then, if that's number 15-
Let me try, let me try to explain that.
I-
In other words, what I'm, in reviewing the chart, and I'm good at reading charts, it's like, at the end of the day, if I don't agree to take a certain amount of money from a certain pot of money, there's a possibility that the amendment that I'm trying to make won't survive.
Let me try to explain what this does. There is an amendment to move SRAK's funding from civic appropriations to another place.
Right.
Okay? And what you want to do is you want to attach your $50,000 to the SRAK funding.
That's right, for the coalition.
So, if SRAK is going to be funded from A, then you want your $50,000 to be attached to that A. If it's going to be funded from B, you want your $50,000 to be attached to that B.
Right.
So, that's all we're trying to do.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
We're trying to make sure that what you want to happen will happen, even if somebody else amends something in a way that you didn't think it was going to be amended.
And we get left out completely.
You won't be left out.
Okay, very good.
You'll be able to vote on yours, whether it gets adopted or not.
I'm going to start guaranteeing it.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to make-
What'd you say, Oliver? You'll be able to vote on it.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Art.
But now, being, Mr. Thompson, did you make it clear that being left out or included would depend on how many votes you can get out of Oliver?
Oh, I know about how many I could get out of Oliver. I've always been clear about that.
Always have your best interest in mind.
Okay.
Okay. I like that. I like that. Okay. Any more observations?
We'll be here all day tomorrow, of course, Mr. Shawn, if anybody has any questions.
So, we have pizza and everything, and salad and all that at the back?
Not today.
Not tomorrow.
We'll have pizza, that's all.
Okay.
Shawn?
Yes, sir.
I know that staff has gotten a copy, as I just confirmed from what's recorded, and I'll get a chance to look at it shortly, but just for the sake of having the opportunity to review these myself prior to tomorrow, is there explanation in detail in each of the amendment requests, Mr. Thompson?
Yeah, the amendments are online, plus we have this sort of condensed sheet.
Okay, all right.
That's a condensed sheet, okay.
All right. Property Standards Appeal.
Good afternoon.
He's a chair.
I have four cases today. My first case is in Councilman Oliver Jenkins' area. It is 140 Pennsylvania Avenue. The owner is not present. I have looked at this house, and it is no longer, Mr. Jenkins, a candidate for demolition. So, based on that, we want to close the case. There is a portion of the east side wherein the siding needs to be replaced on it. We are going to address that with the owner, but I would ask that the case be closed today for demolition.
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Oliver Jenkins, seconded by Councilwoman McCullough, who, the two of them always work very close together. Any questions at this point? Not? All in favor, vote yea, and opposes nay, and I believe we have a 7-0 vote, saying yes, that we will close the case.
And I'd like to make one comment, if I might.
Okay.
You are welcome, when you do talk to the property owner, to express a little bit of my dissatisfaction with their unwillingness to show up here the last two or three times. I think we've been very, I mean, they've done a good job, but they have definitely tested our collective patience on something that did not need to be tested.
I will relay that to them.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Our next case is in Councilman Efferson District, 728 Austin Place. Ms. Deborah Bryant is the owner of the property, and she's here. I would like to have her come up, please. She will give you a status of what's going on with that property.
City Council and Mayor, just wanted to kind of give you an update from September, that we are going to start renovation on the exterior of the property in January.
Kind of give us your name and-
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Debbie Bryant, and my address is 9640 Tammy Avenue in Shreveport, and I'm the owner of the 728 Austin Place Historic Property, the Florentine Club or the Gilvey Wiener Mansion, as a lot of people know it. So, we're going to be starting construction January. Contractors finishing up project right now for December, and we will start January. So, I'm excited about it, and I hope y'all are, too.
We certainly are. And Dorothy, do we need to, just so, and again, I think like we did last time, I think what I'm going to make a motion to do is postpone this a few months so we give y'all a chance to make some additional progress.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, if at all possible, could we maybe go four months? I have to take off of work when I come to these meetings, so-
And in fact, what I might like to do is postpone to the second meeting in February, but to say that, you know, really, all I'd like to hear at that time is the confirmation that work has started.
Okay.
So, you know-
Because it'll take, according to the contractor, it's going to take about six to nine months for the exterior, so it's going to take us a while.
So, just a confirmation that the work has begun about a month and a half after, we're hoping they can begin it, you know, just like I say, a confirmation lets us know it's standing on the way, and then we can postpone again at that point. And really, I think if, as long as you're able to provide that confirmation, I don't think you really need to be here in person.
Okay, just get with Ms. Barnell and-
Would that be acceptable for you, Dorothy?
Yes, we will. Our inspectors will monitor continually the progress, and we'll be able to report to you with pictures and confirmation that it has proceeded.
Great.
If the council will accept that.
Great. Well, in that case, I'd like to make that motion to postpone to the second meeting in February.
Hey, Mr. Thompson, did you get it?
February the 24th.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Jeff, and seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. All in favor?
Yes.
Vote yes, opposes no. That motion passes, so-
Ms. McCullough?
Okay, all right. I'm sorry.
It's a 7-0 vote.
Our next case is 276 Wall Street. It is in Mr. Efferson's area. This case came before, it was, came before the Property Standards Board back in July. It is a demolition. The owner came again on August the 20th, and they requested that he do an estimate of costs for the removal of asbestos and environmental services. He returned back on September the 17th with an estimate of $106,400. The Property Standards Board on September the 17th ordered that the owner be given 90 days to rehab or demolish. Neither has occurred, and he is here today. I'd ask that you would like to speak with him, because we are still requesting that the house be rehabbed or demolished.
Yeah.
And Mr. Jared is here, Mr. Jared Hammond.
Thank you. And this estimate that we have before us, this is just for the asbestos abatement, or this is for the extent of work that needs to be done to get it in compliance?
No, this was for an extent of work, it's just not for the asbestos.
Okay, good. I was going to say, wow, either way, it's a lot, but-
My name is Jared Hammons. I live at 2714 Phelps Road. This is a property I acquired just this year. I'm here to actually get it closed. I don't know why I have to get, it's being demolished. I don't understand why it's on the list for that. I really would like just a little clarification for that.
Well, I think it's because it was in violation of our property standard laws, and so it was cited for the appropriate type of way to get it in compliance, and the appropriate way was determined to be demolition, and so that's when the appeal process opened, and I guess that's how you came to appeal it.
Okay, to get it into compliance? When I looked at the regulations for it, it just says it had to be dilapidated or burnt, something like that, so I looked on the site, and it's neither.
Well, it appears, let's see, it was first cited on the 20th of March in 2013, and then notified subsequently after that in the coming months. Looks like the appeal was filed in July. I don't know, Dorothy, can you give us a little bit more background?
I can answer that, yes, sir. Yes, sir. This was cited, according to the ICC, International Code Council, for violations that are standard, that we actually use as a standard for demolition of structures. Our condition cited everything that was wrong with the structure. That was on the first letter for demolition that we forwarded to him, and it lists everything. There is an extensive list that is in your- There is an extensive list, that is in your folder there.
I can see from the photographs that are in here, there's extensive work that's required.
So these were all the things that needed to be done with the structure to bring it up to code. And the pictures does show evidence of why it needed demolition. So that's what it was cited for.
I also have pictures as well. The property that's next door to it that the city is responsible for has also...
We can't see that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Somebody's got to put that on.
And these properties that you're about to show us, a picture of these are adjudicated, or what properties are these?
Just put the case up.
Up.
Up, okay. But the property that's next door to it that the city is responsible for caused a lot of the damage as well. Now, I just acquired the property this year. I've been cleaning it up as the year's been going on, and I put in like $10,000 already just on the outside of it, then all of a sudden, I receive something on the house saying that it's going to be demolished. And I paid the back taxes as well.
When you say that the city is responsible for around it, are these properties that are adjudicated to the city?
Yes.
Or, I don't, I'm not aware of...
Adjudicated, they're adjudicated to the city, the property next door to it.
Okay, but that's not a property that the city actually owns. It's a city that has tax interest that's been on page to us. Okay.
Let me respond.
Yeah.
We cited violations to properties on that street, so all of those are being addressed.
Uh-huh.
Okay, this is a separate issue with this property, and this is the one that we want to look at for today.
Got it, yeah. Well, so what I want to focus on, too, is, I mean, okay, looking at the pictures, I understand that you acquired this, and perhaps there were already citations on it, I don't know when you acquired it, but it looks like all this happened kind of around the middle of this year, early to mid part of this year.
Mid part, yeah.
But one of the things, you know, clearly, it is going to take a lot of work to get this house up to code. I mean, I would love to see it done, because you can tell this house at some point was very pretty, but, you know, is that something that, what efforts have you made or to come into compliance with the code? I mean, if you, in order to get, I mean, they're, you know, we're looking at an estimate of $100,000 worth of work, I mean, what kind of...
The estimate was done by a company, it's really expensive, but they're the only ones who would actually show an estimate. I could get anybody to give me one verbally, but to have one written, to research it and all that, it's a lot of people who just wouldn't, wouldn't want to waste their time doing it. They did, and they gave me a high estimate. It's nothing, I had to do it for that board.
Yeah.
They wanted it, I had to present it, I did.
I apologize, this is taking a little longer than typical. This is the first I've heard of this particular case, so it's coming a little bit...
Can I comment on, I could comment on that?
I'm still reviewing a little bit.
All right, so, Mr. Hammond, right, okay, so Mr. Hammond, did you, where did you reside before acquiring this property?
Where did I reside? I still reside at 2714 Phelps Road. The highway state is coming through that area, they're going to take my house.
All right, so that was part of some of the property because of the I-49 expansion?
They're taking mine.
Okay.
Within the next area, I'm waiting on my offer.
They're paying you for it, though.
Of course.
Yeah, okay. Okay, and so, as, are you in the home renovation business type of, or in the acquisition of maybe properties this?
Yes.
So this is in your kind of first trip down this road before?
Well, this is just my third.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I just got lucky, it was big, and it's like, oh man, I'm going to get that one. Well, once I got it, I didn't realize all this would come up with, I would have got something smaller, but...
So did you, when you acquired this property, you had already, you had seen it, or you had not seen it?
I've seen it.
Okay.
It just took a while to get to this point, I had to go through acquiring it, I had to go through the court system, it's getting a clear title to it, and that's when I received the notice on my door, after I received clear title to the property. I acquired it, started last year. I went through, cleaned up the lot, cut the grass, kicked out some squatters and stuff like that, when it was under adjudication, with the city and the parish. But now I acquired it and...
So what is your plan for the property, or what is your...
I plan to rehab it, but it's just, I have to pay the lawyer, you know, pay the taxes. There's some other things I have to do first before I can actually get started on working on the property.
But over what timeframe? I mean, it sounds as though...
It being so big, it's going to take at least me a year, at least.
I mean, I worry if it's going to take that long to get to it, there, you know, I mean, it's putting some of the property owners around it in danger and...
But that's before, when you didn't have a owner, it stayed under the adjudication for six years.
Yeah.
And it could have been demolished under that time, but now that it has an owner, why won't you demolish it now?
Well, Dorothy, can we...
We have no problem giving Mr. Hammond an extension on opportunity to do so, it's just that from, we cited this in March, we sent our first letter out in May, and from May to December, there has not been any progress as far as the rehab of the structure. We would work with him on a timeline, if we could get that, to say, and monitor the progress, and we'd be willing to do that.
Well, what I'd like to do then is, I'd like to postpone this 30 days, have you get with Property Standards to come up with a timeline, and then we'll review it in 30 days and see that we've come to an acceptable timeline for it. And again, I apologize, it's for my first chance to see all this information, so it's a little bit much, but I do think that sounds like an appropriate course of action that I'd be comfortable with.
Can I, I don't want to really add it as part of the motion, so I'll wait till afterwards it's coming.
I second.
Is that, is that your motion?
It is.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Neveson, that the gentleman would have 30 days, I believe, in order to get with Property Standards...
January 14th on the schedule.
To work out a timeline. It's been seconded by Councilwoman McCullough.
Okay, I have a question. The schedule will be based off what exactly? Because she could say, well, you have 10 days to do it.
Well, it sounds like, I mean, technically, you've already, you know, gone over the schedule they've talked about, you know, so what she's going to do is meet with you, find out what is a realistic schedule, set some goals together, so that we can make sure that, you know, I just don't want to say, okay, let's postpone this a year, and then a year from now, you come to me and you hadn't done anything yet.
I understand.
So we need to make sure we set some benchmarks, and we know what to be expecting, because if not, I mean, you know, we do have the public safety in mind, and we've got to make sure that, you know, if there isn't any work that's going to be done, or if it's not going to ever occur, then we need to move forward with demolition. If we can come up with a path that allows the house to be rehabbed, then that's great. I mean, that's what we're moving forward.
One comment, and Dorothy, just certainly from my perspective, if in that 30 days, you could get, make some assessment, or he could provide you with some type of invoices, or some idea of what investment level he has already put into the property, because I think a lot of us are kind of up here wondering if there's really a long-term willingness, and certainly, if he's done, made significant money to it already, I think that's going to get us at least a little bit better feel on how this is going to go forward. At least, I'll say that for myself.
Okay, all in favor, vote yes, opposed is no. Motion passes. 7-0 vote.
Our next case is 3649 Darian Street. It's in Mr. Sam Jenkins' area. I don't think the owner is here, Mr. Jenkins, but he did call the office. Now, this is a care premise, a tree had fallen on the structure. He has, he has cut the tree down and cut it into blocks, and he needed 30 more days to actually get everything moved away. And because he has been working on it, I'm willing to give him the extra 30 days to completely remove the tree and all of the other debris around it.
Move for 30 days.
Okay, motion is made by Mr. Sam.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been seconded by Councilman Jenkins. One Jenkins, another Jenkins?
Keep it in the family.
There you go.
Ms. McCullough and Mr. Shannen, please.
That's good, but I really hadn't called for the vote, that's why I hadn't voted.
My apologies, Mr. Chairman.
That's okay, all in favor, vote yes. If we have any no votes, vote no. The motion passes with the 7-0 vote. Thank you.
That's all our cases.
That's for now, then. Okay, let's move on. There are no ABO appeals. The Metropolitan Planning Commission Appeals, zoning boards of appeals. I believe we have none. Reports from officers, boards, and committees. Do we have any?
I guess I, I guess I can give a report in reference to the master plan committee, the master plan meeting that the mayor, the mayor's initiative of the master plan, I guess it was like a work session on Saturday. I just wanted to kind of bring to the focus of this council that there were several comments regarding the support of entrepreneurship regarding the workforce here in the city of Shreveport in comparison to other major cities. And I did make people in attendance aware of the fact that members of this council, without any name-calling, were considering cutting funding for the summer jobs program, but in conjunction with what was being suggested on Saturday by the people in attendance. This is something that they really would like to see go forward and really like to see happen in the city of Shreveport as far as training, internships, entrepreneurships. So I did suggest to them, based on the fact that I had knowledge of the fact or the possibility that funding was being considered to be cut from the summer employment program, that this council be made aware of some of the suggestions that were made by several people, or several entities that were in attendance. This is something that seems like that they feel that the city really need at this particular time. So I just wanted to share with you regarding that. We had a real good meeting, of course, it was kind of cold, and the attendance wasn't as large as we expected. Also, while I'm on that note, just know that the Council on Neighborhoods did meet, they were able to select an interim president, as well as an interim secretary, and of course, you've seen the resolution to support the neighborhood on counseling, that's, that has been forwarded to agenda to be voted on tomorrow. But the council did meet, we had over, on a cold rainy windy that night last Thursday, we had over, or right at 30 people in attendance that actually came out. And again, they did do an interim president, interim secretary, and some minutes have been recorded, and of course, they did form a bylaws committee. So I'm asking for your support on the resolution to move forward with the Council on Neighborhoods as well. But since I was there, I thought I'd throw that in.
I see, Mr. David Aubrey has graced us with his presence. Did you want him to say a word or two on, on the summer jobs?
Would you, David?
And David, we appreciate you taking the time out of your extremely busy schedule to come down and grace this council. Councilman Oliver Jenkins and I have been looking forward to coming down for a long time.
And Mr. Chairman, why he has the mic, it may be good if he addresses a little bit on MSI.
Thank you.
Two birds and one stone.
David...
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman and members of the council, certainly, I appreciate your, allowing me this opportunity to speak, and I did attend the master plan update meeting. And having been one of the citizens that really worked for the last four years, a number of volunteer hours going across all of the neighborhoods in the city, to see a number of the citizens still concerned and involved and engaged, to give up their Saturday and still keep pressing forward, I think that's quite noble. And a number of the CAG members, Community Advisor Group members, are still active and still interested in the master plan process. Like Councilwoman McCullough said, there was a discussion, and the consultants, and their very candid opinions about our community were very concerned about our workforce and how we engage the young people to be a participant, to get involved in the experience, to be prepared for the opportunity that the city is trying to plant seeds and to plant opportunity to keep our young people here. They did ask us to be very cognizant of what we're doing and what message that we're sending, so they were very supportive of that message, that what you're...
That's what I...
And now, as Councilman Jenkins has expressed...
Just one minute, before you, before you move on there, I would hope that you would maybe take a few minutes after the meeting or sometimes, and call Councilman Carvin, and, and see if we can discuss that about the importance of the summer jobs, and how these jobs really help a lot of kids who come from impoverished neighborhoods and backgrounds who might not be able to go down to Councilman Sam Jenkins' car dealership and get a job, and...
Absolutely. Just over the Thanksgiving break, the young lady who the city, we worked together, who worked for our organization, the Strategic Action Council this summer, she did such a great job. She's a cheerleader at Huntington, and she had that time available, and we had some filing and some significant amount of copying to work on a big report for Mr. Sibley. So we brought that young lady in on her Thanksgiving, she worked Monday, Tuesday, and half a day on Wednesday. So even though summer jobs may, took care of during the summer, we were able to find a few hundred dollars to take care of her, to help her make some money while she was out. So it is a good deal, and she's looking forward to enrolling at Southern University this fall. But it's a very outstanding young lady.
And I would hope that you could talk to Councilman Carvin from the standpoint that this is an investment. This is an investment into the most important resources we have, and those are human resources. And especially when we're dealing with our young people, because we, and doing that, who knows, it might be a future preacher, future teacher, future lawyer, future oil person, oil and gas investor...
Future council member?
Yeah, a future council member, a future businessman who might, might be doing some roofing in the, in the near future. So I would hope that you would do that, because this is a very important program, and I've been down here a long time, and I've seen the benefits of that, of that program. So, David, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Also, I'd like to just share, too, the, I don't know the older guy, I think he was one of our speakers, David, that got up and spoke, he gave a story about when he was eight years old. Do you remember that guy's name?
Don't remember.
But anyway, the point that he stressed was that the one thing Shreveport have got to get past, they've got, the city of Shreveport itself have got to make a change. He said, because, and I'm not, I'm not playing the race card, but this was a... but this was a, this guy looked like he was in his 70s, white male. He said, the one problem that Shreveport has is that it's not catering to the younger generation to the point whereby, it's not that they don't like Shreveport, but Shreveport has nothing to offer. And these were his very words. He said, the problem with the city of Shreveport is that all of your white population is moving to Bossier and all of your black population is moving to the city of Shreveport. And those people that actually have a life or an interest in the city of Shreveport, they choose to leave because we have nothing to offer them. And so I just want, that was really kind of not strange, but you know, it kind of put me in awe, hearing this coming from, I'm pretty sure he was over 70 years, years old, a 70-year-old Caucasian male, expressing this to us as a body representing the city of Shreveport. So I think maybe we need to focus on that and actually look at that and evaluate that. And maybe at some point, we can get beyond that. Because, you know, I like Bossier. I want to be just as good and just as great as Bossier is. And I'd like, you know, to see the population build more so, a diverse population build in the city of Shreveport, just as other major cities are doing. But again, it appears as if though there's a stronghold there, you know, to keep us divided. And I think we need to get, and I guess the female and the mother hen is coming out in me now. You know, at some point, we got to get beyond the being divided. You know, there's a stronghold, you know, for one population not to get anything or if you get anything, very little in order to be successful, which is driving our people away. I hope at some point, Oliver, before you leave, don't leave. Oh, you're not leaving?
I'm going to just move over here for one second.
You're so handsome and tall, when you get up, you know, it distracts me.
I said, mother hen.
But I hope at some point, you know, it's not a pity for you. It's not, I don't want sympathy, but empathy, you know. We need to get beyond that. We need to start, just like in the cities of Birmingham, Alabama, we went and we took tours, Austin, Texas, same thing, Oklahoma. These people are coming together and they're actually working together to make it happen for everybody. And I think that's what we need to do in the city of Shreveport. We need to focus on how we can actually come together and make it happen for everybody in the city of Shreveport. And for some reason, as I was thinking this, I could hear Mandela's voice saying, because we love you. You know, we're not taught, we're not born to hate. We're not born to hate. We learn hate. And so we need to get beyond what we have learned or maybe what we have been taught, beyond what we were actually born into the world with. So that we can be like a lot of the other major cities. Having it going on with everybody. And having our children to come back and want to be at home and want to live and want to work at home. Versus setting out to seek out how I can pull, you know, a couple of crumbs out of your mouth to hold you back. Because, you know, again, it's been said, you know, you can't hurt me without hurting yourself. What affects you, it affects me. And I just say to the city of Shreveport, being a mother hen, let's move on, let's get past that.
Mr. Mayor, we just, we just heard a very powerful speech from Councilwoman McCullough. A very powerful speech. And I don't mean to speak for Councilman Carvin, but I don't think this was done in the, I don't think this was done with any kind of racial overtone. I think he was probably looking at it from a budgetary manner. Now, if he was, you know, I stand to be corrected. But I wouldn't want to interject. At this particular point, I, you know, I don't mind interjecting race in something, but I don't think at this particular point that, 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 this is a good point to interject race into, into our budget. David.
Mr. Shine, Councilman Jenkins also mentioned, I know there's some concern, and I want to just tell you that on behalf of the Strategic Action Council and the Minority Supply Institute, we've been in almost a one full year programming. And so even though that was a PR launch in 2012, we've really spent 2013 for our programming efforts. And we do have some very ambitious plans for 2014. And we're going to do more to communicate to make sure that you see the value. And we certainly are concerned about a 50% cut that's being proposed as an amendment. And one of our members, certainly when I spoke to him about what was going on, he's doing some work for us, he actually came and is prepared to make some comments, Mr. Rodney White from White's Printing. And I will relinquish my, whatever questions I'd be here to ask. But if you would be so kind, I would love for Mr. Rodney White to just make a comment, Mr. Shine.
All right, let me, let me, let me say this. Mr. White, you free to come up and make your comment at this particular time. But tomorrow, I would hope that, and you too, would come back when we start our budget hearing. And, and I'm going, I'm going to say you would be able to make any plea that you would want to in order to substantiate, you know, level of funding that you have now. So, Mr. White, I'm going to extend an invitation to you.
Well, thank you and greetings to all you guys. I just was just asked to come and kind of briefly give a, a little insight into how the Minority Strategic Action Council has helped my business. Basically, I'm the manager for White's Printing and Graphic Design, which is a business that was established back in '52 by my parents and has been in business for over 60 years. And we have managed to transition with the printing and graphics industry from the handset type all the way to digital printing. But we have not been able to successfully cross over into racial boundaries or to larger accounts. And since I've been a member, which has been just only a few months, to be honest. And basically, I've been managing for 40 years almost. But in the last few months, I basically have finished my first order for KCS, have done several orders for the tourist bureau, actually brought a sample of a calendar that we just done for HGA, even Ben Tiller, which is a, a global company. I'm located on the other side of the tracks, meaning actually Allendale. In his no way, Ben Tiller would have ever found me or even given me a chance. Basically, been knocking on doors, selling my service. And it's been through the council that I finally got a foot in the door. Thank you.
Mr. White, we appreciate you coming down and we would hope you and David both would, would appear tomorrow and, and, and these are proposed amendments. And none of this is law at this particular time. We will vote on them tomorrow. And this is, you know, we would appreciate you all coming down and discussing this. And this is not a, a, a debating forum, but this is a forum that we use for discussion. Councilman Sam Jenkins and Oliver Jenkins both remind me from time to time that this is not a debating class down here. You know, while we debate, but we, we do discuss. We do have discussions down here. And I think when Sam was at Bird, he might have been on one of the debating team. But then when he matriculated at Southern, I'm told, I don't know, that he was a pretty good debater, David. So, but he does remind you and Oliver both that this is a discussion forum that we have down here, not a debating forum. So tomorrow, I would suggest that you all would come back and anybody else that you would have that would be able to make the, the, the kind of positive statement that you've made, please have them to come back. And again, David, it's so good to, to see you here. And you do do a fine job.
Mr. White, you did a great job on our souvenir booklet.
Now, if we have no more committee reports, Oliver, I know you're always in tune to have a, a, a close report, but I don't know whether Mr. Thompson had time to go into a lot of details and preparing his reports. So if it's all right with you, Oliver, we'll give him another day. Okay, I'm sorry, okay.
I was going, I was going to give you the free pass.
I wanted to mention a couple of things about the budget. Again, just a couple. Number one, on the budget amendment for the Capitals budget, the administration, they prepared a new budget ordinance in lieu of amendments one and two, which were cleanup. I believe all of that was cleanup. So rather than have all of those amendments that we will have to go back and attach to the budget ordinance, they will come back with one to substitute for what was previously submitted. And so that's one thing. Another thing, Mr. Oliver Jenkins brought to our attention that some of the administration's amendments were not on the sheet prepared by Ms. White. We will go back and the ones that are not cleanup, if that's okay, the ones that you may vote for or against, we will include those so that you will have a complete picture.
How soon will we get those, before, before meeting tomorrow?
Yes.
I mean, how soon would we, would we be able to review those before the meeting tomorrow?
We will email them to you and we will have them if anybody wants to come a little early. You may not be able to print them, I don't know, because you have to print them on a legal paper.
It's a long paper like this? Okay.
We will have those. The other thing is there were a couple...
How about, Mr. Thompson, if y'all could make them available in an office, maybe around 1:00?
We'll do that, Mr. Shine. We also, the mayor has some appointments, two appointments that will be on the December 20th. Agenda, one is a Shreveport, Bossier Convention and Tourist Bureau, Ms. Bradford, Tari Bradford, and the other, Mr. Green for the Assistant Director of Property Standards.
You said, Mr. Green?
Yes.
Terrance Greens.
Terrance Green.
Excellent suggestion.
I was just kind of...
So that concludes the report.
I was just kind of wondering, Art, if that was your cousin, Reverend James Green. All right, we are now... Mr. Thompson, I want to say that we, we at a point where we can go into our executive session.
Ready to, Mr. Shine? You ready for the motion? From who? The motion would be to go into executive session to discuss Richard Mutter, Sr. versus Kioko H. Mutter versus David Cal Carlisle in the city of Shreveport in Salado, docket number 565 comma 52A-B, First Judicial District Court, Kettles, Paris, Louisiana.
I believe we got the move by Councilman Sam Jenkins and a second by Councilman Oliver Jenkins. We're going to our executive session right behind the main chamber. All in favor, vote yes. We have a seven oh vote, I believe.
Your person?
Yes.
Can I please ask to be excused from the executive session? Today is my baby's birthday and I have promised her dinner. So I've got to go and get some things lined up to take her to dinner. Can I ask to be excused?
Yes.
That's something that requires a vote and a motion. I'm not sure how I feel about that.
Today's her birthday and I really got to get in place.
Oliver says, okay.
Thank you, Oliver.
Okay, let's, let's move quickly and quietly.